Hamilton County Auditor Brigid Kelly. Mrs. Kelly could not be here this evening. She does send her best regards, and she also thanks you for your service to, you know, not only Sycamore Township, but also to Hamilton County. So, thank you for the work you do. I may look a little bit familiar. I've been here at this meeting in a different role as the Sycamore Community Schools Treasurer. So, I also just want to thank you. The Sycamore Treasurer could not be here this evening, but I also want to thank you for the partnership that you've had with the Sycamore Community Schools over the year. So, with that, let's go forward with the first or the third item on our agenda. If I could have a motion for approval of the minutes of the March 21st, 2023.
Motion approved.
Second.
Okay. Any questions? Corrections? Okay. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Okay. Mr. Bickford, if you would, please provide a review of outstanding TIF district taxes within the township.
Happy to say that all TIF districts are fully paid up. The schools have been fully paid. There are only two properties that are delinquent in taxes, and it's in the Equastar TIF, the old Equastar TIF, which is a non-debt-bearing TIF. So, it's a cash-building TIF. It's property on Gold Coast Drive. For whatever reasons, haven't paid their taxes. This is the first year they have not paid them. So, we expect it's just an oversight on their part. They don't have a history of being delinquent. This current group has owned the property for approximately four years. So, there's no debt associated with that, and the schools have been paid the amount that has been brought in the TIF. So, other than that, all of the TIFs are current and up-to-date and fully paid.
Okay. Any questions from the board? Any questions from the schools or any comments? Okay, great. With that, if we could have a motion to recommend continuation of all the current TIF projects.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions? With that, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. We are getting close to the end of our agenda. Mr. Bickford, did you have any other business to share with the committee? Any new projects?
We have no new TIF projects currently in the last these two years, so.
Okay. Any comments from any of the trustees or school representatives?
Not by us.
Okay, sounds good. And with that, I would like a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.[182.87]
From my perspective, I mean, it was pretty clear at the last meeting when we all were here together, you acknowledged that it was an unsafe condition. It was, you know, our inspector and our fire department that went out and said it was in an unsafe condition. It needed to be fenced off and all of those things.
I fenced it all.
The fence is not remotely secure to keep people out of there, and the weather's getting nice, kids are out playing. It's concerning to me. I respect that you need some time to get the money together, but, you know, the fact that you just went less than seven days ago, less than a week ago, to finally apply for a permit when we told you you had 30 days to remedy the situation is concerning to me. But there's been no movement on this whatsoever.
I understand.
To make this a safe environment.
I understand. I'm gonna do my best. Like I said, I was gonna, that was at the time, you know, that I had enough money to get the dumpster there and get some machinery out there to demolition it. So I go to get the permit last week, because that's when, like I said, I had the money together to, you know, get some machinery out there and a dumpster. And she told me eight to 10 days, so I knew I was gonna be seeing you probably before that.
Have you talked to the utility companies?
Yeah, this permit, she told me they take care of it with this permit, that they cap off the water, they cap off the electric, they cap off the sewage. That's why I get, I'm assuming that's probably why it was eight to 10 days.
She told you who would do that?
The companies would do that.
What time?
The company that...
The demo company?
No, no. I got a demo permit. She knows I'm demoing it. I, well, that was the, that was the, she said the water company would come out and cap the water off. And the sewage, the sewage, I guess, I mean, whoever does the sewage, I guess. I was waiting for the email from her, and I was gonna, you know, call her back and make sure of that, but she's, that's what, my understanding, that was what it took eight to 10 days for, for that. And that, I wouldn't get the, like I said, I paid for her further permit that day. If I didn't get handed it, she said I'd get an email, eight to 10 days. And she asked me about that, and I said, or asked me, you know, and she said, yeah, they would be, that's what, my understanding, that's what eight to 10 days was from the cap, the water, the electric.
How much was your permit fee?
Uh, what was it, $175? We have that right here if you need to look at it. He has $173. Yeah, I can, I can definitely go down and fix that fence. It's not a problem. I wasn't aware it was down, because I did get a call from, maybe this gentleman here is one of the gentlemen I had talked before, when I was calling about a dumpster, and he did, he alerted me that the fence was down. I went and fixed it right away. That was about a week after, I did it a couple days after I seen you guys in. It was about a week after that, he alerted me it was down in the back. I think it might have been wind or something that put it down then, because it wasn't down all the way across the front then. And I went and corrected, you know, fixed it, the backyard where the fence was down. Then, I wasn't aware it was down this time. I only live, like, two miles from the property, but, I mean, I'm not there. I could be right down there to fix that fence without, I mean, with no problem. If I wasn't intended on cleaning it up, I wouldn't, I mean, I wouldn't ask, you know, I wouldn't waste your time. I'm gonna ask you and ask you to allow me.
I have nothing else to say.
Okay. Appreciate it. We're gonna close the public hearing, and we will resume in five minutes with our regular meeting.
Thank you, sir.
We're gonna start our regular meeting. Indication is, will be read by Mr. Kellums. Indication tonight is from St. Sabres Church.
Lord, we come together this evening to work, but we want to give you thanks first of all that we live in a country where we are free to have a share in our government. We thank you for all the employees, elected officials of our township and their commitment to service. Keep all of them healthy and safe. We ask for your guidance in this meeting. May we truly understand the questions before us and be just in our decisions. We ask this in the name of Jesus, our Lord. Amen.
But please remain standing for the pledge of allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which stands one nation under God and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Dieters would note that all three...
Trustees are present. First item on the agenda is approval of minutes from March 5th. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion seconded. Further discussion. Mr. Dieters.
Mr. Kellums.
Aye.
Ms. Swagman.
Aye.
Mr. Weedman.
Aye. Next item on the agenda is public comments. Looks like we have two people that signed up. First person on the list is Jeff Baumgart. So you'll have four minutes. Jeff, if you want to give us your name and address for the record.
Okay. My name is Jeff Baumgart with Myers Y Cooper Company. Address is 9301 Montgomery Road. Our company developed and operates the Sycamore Executive Center at the corner of Kenwood and Galworth Roads. In 2004, when this project was approved, we agreed to a 50% limit on medical office due to the projected parking needs of 100% medical. In 2022, we leased over half of the project to Legacy Healing, which is a business that offers addiction counseling services. Prior to entering into that lease, the township zoning administrator at that time confirmed that that use was okay in the office zoning. In late '22, Legacy applied for a zoning certificate, listing their use as office, and the township issued a zoning certificate. They do not have exam rooms, they do not have medical doctors on staff, they do not issue prescriptions, they employ therapists and psychiatrists. Legacy shovels clients in from off-site housing and consequently does not use even a fraction of the parking that a typical office user would need. The fact that Legacy Healing's square footage alone is above the 50% threshold, it is clear that they are not a medical office. In February of this year, we leased a 3,100 square foot office suite to Concierge Medicine of Cincinnati. Upon their application for a zoning certificate, the current zoning administrator denied their request. He stated that he believes Legacy is a medical office and therefore believes the existing issued zoning certificate is wrong. The argument at that time was that the zoning code does not list a separate parking classification for psychological counseling, so therefore it must be medical office. However, Chapter 3 of the Township Zoning Code differentiates psychological counseling from medical offices. Because we are in compliance with the previously issued zoning certificates, we entered into a lease, hired designers, contractors, and the tenant has hired doctors to staff their new office. Township staff has suggested we pursue a formal PUD modification process, which will take months, and the tenant can't wait that long. They have advised us that they will cancel their lease and leave, which will have substantial financial ramifications both for them and us. We are asking the trustees for an administrative solution to this problem that we did not create. I'm happy to answer any questions.
I understand that you have an attorney, and your attorney has contacted our attorney.
He has reached out to Mr. Barbier. I don't believe they've had, actually had communications at this point, but he has sent an email.
Yeah, he sent me an email when I was on vacation, and sent me another email this afternoon. I intend to call him.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next person on the list is Brian Hay.
My name is Brian Hag. I live at 4106 Jet Drive. I'm here again in regards to the last couple meetings. I came in about the home rule, Township Zoning Law, and that according to Ohio Revised Code, Section 51925, Township zoning may be repealed. In any township in which there is a force, a plan, or enforce a plan of township zoning, the plan may be repealed by the Board of Township Trustees in the following manner. A, the board may adopt a resolution upon its own initiative, or B, the board shall adopt a resolution. And according to Ohio Revised Code 50403A1, if the limited home rule form of government is adopted pursuant to Division B of this section, at the end, according to Section 50402 of the Ohio Revised Code, it shall remain in effect for at least three years except as otherwise provided in Division B of this section. At the end of that period, if the Board of Township Trustees determines that that government is not in the best interest of the township, it may adopt a resolution causing the Board of Elections to submit to the electors of the unincorporated area of the township the question of whether the township should continue the limited home rule government. According to Ohio Revised Code 50403, the trustees never offered this repeal to us, even though in 1991, the law was originally passed. Three years later, it was never offered to the voters to repeal it. Township trustees decided it was in their best interests to keep things as they are, and it also allows the township to violate my constitutionally protected rights under the Fourth, Fifth, Sixth, and Seventh Amendments. Also, I had a question regarding Jeff O'Connor, the Planning and Zoning Administrator, the job requirements for his position. I found out when I went to court with him a few weeks ago that the qualifications for his job are minimal. He doesn't even need to know how to read a blueprint, know anything about plumbing or electricity. Being a power plant qualified stationary engineer with a first-class license, I have those qualifications myself. I am a trained electrician, trained plumber, and I can read blueprints. And I would be interested in applying for the zoning administrator position, because I think my qualifications that I have through 30 years that I worked at the University of Cincinnati would be helpful in doing that job. Also, I had another question on last month's agenda. There was a resolution imposing a one-year moratorium on digital signs within Sycamore Township, Ohio. I'd like to see what, you know, some of the legislation and stuff surrounding that, because you're basically telling everybody in the town that they can't advertise that their sign's open, because the sign is the digital sign that says "open." You're really kind of getting a little bit out of your control. You think you have so much control, and then you just take a little bit more and a little bit more, and it's kind of tiring for us citizens out here who believe in the Constitution and the Bill of Rights to have those rights eroded without anything we can do about it. I was recently drug into court by this fellow over here, and the judge didn't even think it was noteworthy that he never signed the complaint that brought me into the court. He said, well, we got you here anyway. I think that's really wrong. The court needs to abolish, or live by the court system and the laws.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Hay.
Thank you very much.
Bobby O'Neil, you were on here, but I don't know if you wanted to speak about something else or not.
I spoke to you.
Okay, okay, we're good. We're good.
I need to, I mean, I need to, I mean, I don't need to say anything. I'm sorry.
No, no, I think we're good. We don't have any other questions. We don't have any other questions.
You don't need to say nothing.
I'm sorry.
You don't need to say anything.
Well, you're on the agenda further down the list, it looks like.
Thank you, I'm sorry.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is Sheriff Patrol.
Good evening. I'd like to talk about a partnership or a new program that sheriff...
Oh, our timer's going off. Oh, sorry about that.
Am I done?
You're out of time.
Sorry.
Thanks for playing.
Thanks for that report. Excellent report.
I was expecting a little more time. Not gonna go one, two. No. Okay, I'd like to talk about a new program the sheriff recently launched, and it's called Connect Hamilton County. I'll be brief, because our website's very informative, but this is going to be a partnership between the sheriff's office, the community, and a third party, a company, FUSIS. And it'll allow companies or your residents to do one of two things, or both. The first is to register any security cameras that they may have with this company, FUSIS. What the registry will let us do simply is know that your cameras are there. If we're in a particular location, and we've had a crime, a missing person, anything, our investigators, our street guys can immediately pull up that map and know we have cameras here, here, and here. It also provides a means of us, or for us to immediately contact the owner of the camera via email and request video from certain times. So that would be a really great tool for our investigators and even the guys on the street, because we spend a lot of time at crime scenes going around. And the guys that work the beats generally know the businesses that have computers, the cameras, the places we frequent, but quite often, we're in neighborhoods or a business location that we may not go to all that often. And to be able to have immediate access in a map of where cameras are would provide a great tool to us and help us really get a jumpstart on some of these cases. The second component of this, well, you will be able to, now, the registration is free. You simply go to the website. You can go, it's on our, the link's on our website, under public information. Mr. O'Connor, if you could get us there.
Yeah, it's right under find information.
Find information, I'm sorry. And at the bottom, Connect Hamilton County.
Down at the bottom, down here, if you can see my scroll.
Can you click on that, please? And then if you can scroll down just a little bit, Level 1 is just to register your camera. This is free of charge. I've not done it. I don't have any cameras to register, obviously, but I've been told it takes about a minute. You simply provide the location of your camera and some contact information. The next option businesses or residents will have is to integrate your cameras. What this will do on a multitude of levels would allow you to have access to, allow us to have access to your cameras real time in the event of a critical incident. Our dispatchers, if we're dispatched to a business for a robbery, could immediately pull up cameras at that locations. Businesses have complete control over the level of access we have. There may be certain cameras you don't want us to have access to in your business, the level of access and everything. But I won't take up too much time. Like I said, I would direct people to the website. It's got a really good frequently asked questions page for either option. The Learn More tab has a lot of information, but we're really excited about this, and we're hoping to get it rolling pretty soon.
That's great.
Great. Any questions?
No, I think it's terrific. I think it's a terrific option for people. If it shortens your investigative time, even better, which is great.
Okay. Next item on the, anybody else have anything else for, okay. EMS and Fire Report Chief.
Good evening. We have one of our full-time guys retiring at the end of this month, so I'm asking for approval to start a process for interviewing to replace him. And we have some part-timers that are currently with us that we can pick from that were last year just out of Cincinnati State School, so they'll be starting at a recruit level. And they're good guys. They've been with us for a year, and they've really proven to enjoy working with us, and they seem to be good firefighters. They're not medics, but they're getting them ready to go into medic school.
Okay, very good.
That's great. We have a pipeline.
I like that recruitment.
I like that pipeline.
Yeah, that's about all that's out there right now. So I'll start that process.
Is there a recruiting class coming up?
We're coming, there's one coming up, yeah. We got our, we got our nose in the, in the field to see if we can pick up some additional people.
Good, okay.
That's all I have.
Any questions? Okay, next item on the agenda is Planning and Zoning Report.
Thanks, Mr. Sheriff. I have two items. The first item is, would relate from our 645 public hearing for the property at 7853, 7855, 7861 Cincy Avenue, otherwise known as 12020 Fifth Avenue. How would you like to proceed? It relates to Resolution 2024-14.
No, this is, I'll fill it for you. So though I feel for the resident, I know this has been going on a long time, I have concerns about the safety issue. I mean, that's been unsafe and unsecured for some time. The fence has been down more than it's been up since it was put up. You know, we gave a month and talked about we needed to see significant improvement in here. And from these pictures, I have seen no improvement at all. So I would like to make a motion to enforce Resolution 2024-014 to remove unsafe and unsecured structures at 7853, 7855, 7861 Cincinnati Avenue as set forth in the resolution.
Do you have a second?
I'll second.
Motion seconded. Further discussion. Mr. Dieters.
Mr. Kellums.
Aye.
Ms. Swagman.
Aye.
Mr. Weedman.
Aye.
Thank you. I'll get that scheduled. The other item I have this evening relates to a property on Seventh Avenue, 12060 Seventh Avenue. Relates to items that are stored outside, in terms of junk or debris or household items outside. The complaint initiated was anonymous, but the township, I will show, has had awareness that, or there's been several complaints. The date of the most recent complaint was the 11th of January. The property was owner occupied, occupied by, I understand they had a fire at the end of 2023. The date of the violation letter went out on January 30th, 2024. The date of last inspection was March 13th. We're also there today. Related to the property at 12060, violation notice went out for items on the property. The owner did clean up the items on the front of the property in consultation with one of the neighbors behind on Bear Creek. The neighbor invited the inspector to go back to take photos of the back of the property, and just here are the photos of the back of the property of just items that are stored outside. These photos were taken today at 1:13 PM.
He's all back.
And then I would just note that related to this property...
Is that a hole in the roof?
It is. I think it's...
There was a fire at the property.
Right.
And here's, I don't know, it's blown up. The township did have a, in 2022, the township did pass a nuisance resolution to clean up the property. In 2023, at the, in October of 2023, the township had another notice sent to the property owner, and the items were removed from the front yard, and that was in October of 2023. And then the current complaint is this complaint here, or the current...
So that one was before the fire?
The, in the 2023 one, yeah, it was in October. There were still leaves on the trees. The house, and I have the photos if you want to see it, but the house did experience a fire, I believe at the end of December. The fire chief may be aware, or certainly is aware. That's kind of what the status of the property, I don't believe the property owner is living there currently, just due to the result of the fire.
The structure's safe, though.
In speaking to the fire marshal, Mr. Morath, I didn't get the indication that a, like, similar to the property on Fifth Avenue where the house was clearly compromised, I didn't get that indication about this, but the house inside is certainly charred, just by the official fire photos that are on file.
Is this locked? Do you know?
I have not gone, I don't know that Kevin's gone up to the front door to check. As far as I'm aware, there are no open entries, and I think the front window was boarded up. It's been replaced. I believe there's one back window that's been boarded up, but no, I don't believe it's, it's open, like Fifth Avenue.
Scroll back a couple of, couple of images. Slow, 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 stop.
Oops, sorry.
No, I'm just looking at the fence. I can't tell, I mean, it looks like the fence is, some areas of the fence are starting to be compromised as well.
So that's the fence that backs up to the, on the very back perimeter?
I believe so. The, Mr. Clark mentioned that the property owner on Buck Creek, or it was Buckland, the property behind, no, Bear Creek, you know, was, you know, walking with him to take the photos, so that's where he took the photos from.
Okay. Any questions? Okay, you have a resolution on this property?
I do. It's a resolution providing for and authorizing removal of vegetation, garbage, and refuse and other debris, and declaring a nuisance for the property located at 12060 Seventh Avenue. and declaring a nuisance for the property located at 12060 Seventh Avenue, Sycamore Township, Ohio 45249.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion is second, any further discussion? Yeah, I'll go ahead. Go up to the microphone.
We are the owners of that property on Seventh Avenue.
Name and address for the record, please.
Timothy S. Pendergrass, sorry about that. And we are the previous occupants of that property, and I have been up there cleaning that property up. A lot of it will be gone, and I addressed Mr. Kevin Clark, but I got health issues, I gotta have a new heart, so I'm doing what I can up there. And, uh, I just got out of the hospital again the other day, so, you know, like I told Kevin, he was supposed to call me back, I called him twice. I was like, look, you know, go up there and look at it, see what you think, and then get back with me and let me know what else I need to do. I'm already in the process of getting rid of all the metal and everything to be gone. I originally called the township to ask for a donation of a dumpster. I'm not working right now, I'm trying to get my social security and, and they said they don't do that, but they'll be having to clean up coming up, so I figured a lot of it I could get up, get rid of when they have the cleanup coming up. But, uh, I, I mean, I can't go any faster, you know, I, I'm, my health's not good right now, so I'm doing what I can, you know, but I have cleaned the front up, you know.
We're also on the hunt of a new house.
Yeah, we don't have a place to live.
My name is Sammy Singleton, I am his girlfriend. We have two, two children together. Altogether, we have four children that was in the home. We've lost everything we've had. We've tried to clean up, we've done everything that we've been asked. Nobody said anything about the back. We did clean up what could be seen, you know, but we were working on getting everything done. We wanted to sell the place. Then we had the house fire. First, we had to lay his father to rest four days before Christmas Eve. Christmas Eve, the house caught on fire, we lost everything. Our kids did not even get a Christmas. Right now, we're in the process of trying to find a home, which has been very difficult, so we are homeless. And he's, his pacemaker went off five times the other night. So I almost lost him, he has to have another procedure done. So he cannot be in and out of cold weather, rain, snow, you know, and we are trying to do, we're trying to work with people. You know, it's very difficult for us. I know it's a mess, but we gave up everything we had to move in with his father, who had dementia. Okay, not too long after we moved in there, he was, had to go to a nursing home. Then we lost him, and now we lost everything, you know. We were helping out people, we gave people a place to stay when they needed a place, and now we are out on our butts. And you know, now that everything's got tiring, the people now, they forgot, forget about us, you know. Everybody can lay their head down to rest at night, sleeping comfortably. We.
Living in a one-bedroom.
Are living in a one-bedroom, with five of us. It's very difficult. I, I mean, if I lose him, he's all I have. I have no more family. This is a lot on him.
So I'm asking Lena to give me more time.
The stress is taking him down, but we are working as fast as we can with his health.
So I'd like to ask Lena to see and give me more time.
Extend it a little bit longer so we can get it cleaned up. It's starting to get warmer out, I mean, and the cleanup's coming up.
What's the date of the trash?
What's the trash bash coming up here in?
Up north. I mean, we can't give you an unended period of time, obviously.
The, the North Trash Bash is at McDaniel Park, will be held on April 12th and 13th.
Is that in, was it in?
End of April 12th and 13th.
April 12th and 13th.
Is the, is the North Trash, is the Trash, Trash Bash Day up at McDaniel, up north?
So if we give you 30 days, that would put you past the trash bash?
Yes, yes.
Would you think you could be able to have it cleaned up by then?
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Yes.
We're trying to do, like she said, do what we can.
It's been very difficult.
I'll be complying, I mean, I'm talking to the, you know, people, I'm just like.
It's not like we're avoiding or hiding.
Everything that's thrown in versus a front, now, I'm saying it's the back, it's like, oh, man, I just, I'm doing it here. I just need to fix the roof and clean the front porch off, clean the front up, you know, and, uh, I, I think the house is really an improvement compared to what it was when we first moved in, because my dad was on that place for 37 years.
He has ten of everything. I mean, it's just, you know.
We painted the house, we were trying to improve it so I could sell it, and then this happened, and now it just kind of put a big dent in our life.
Yes.
And really hard. I don't know what else to do, I'm gonna have to see it a little more time.
Okay, well, I'd like to make a motion to table until April 16th meeting.
Second that motion.
Motion is second, any further discussion? Mr. Dieters.
Mr. Kellums.
Aye.
Ms. Schwagman.
Aye.
Mr. Weedman.
Aye.
So you have until the 16th, we have a meeting here on the 16th?
Okay.
And you'll have the opportunity to take advantage of our trash bash on the 12th and 13th.
All right, appreciate that.
And, uh, let's just get it cleaned up because, as you know, there's, there's no reason to have all this trash in the backyard.
Yeah, I mean, a lot of it's metal, it's going in the scrapyard. I'll have the majority of it done within the next five days, but.
Yes.
I'm, 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 I'm just doing what I can with my health, you know, I just can't, I can't go any faster, you know. Used to, I could run a country mile, now I can't even run a half a mile.
Well, the 16th is a, is a hard date, so try to get it done.
Yes.
All right, I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thanks, Doc. Best of luck to you. Thank you.
With that, that is all I have.
Okay, any questions? Roads Maintenance and Recreation, Stevie.
Yep. Good evening. I'd like to start off with letting you guys know, we held a pre-construction meeting for the 2024 Sidewalk Maintenance Program. The sidewalk repairs for this project will begin in a couple of weeks, and their repairs will be concentrated within the Wind subdivision, all fields are a road. Those would be the Still Wind, Autumn Wind, Bear Creek roads. And our maintenance department will continue to concentrate on sidewalk repairs elsewhere within the township this summer. Requesting two motions tonight. First motion, I'm requesting the board to advertise for the Euclid Avenue Sidewalk Project. This sidewalk project installs sidewalks on the north side of Euclid between Michael and Hosbrook. Estimated cost is approximately 1.2 million. This is a 70-30 sorta grant.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second, any further discussion? Mr. Dieters. Mr. Dieters.
Mr. Kellums.
Aye.
Ms. Schwagman.
Aye.
Mr. Weedman.
Aye.
Second motion I'm requesting from the board is a motion to advertise for the Finley Lane Sidewalk Project. This project installs a sidewalk on the north side of Finley Lane between Montgomery Road and Lindhurst Drive. Estimated cost is approximately 260,000. This is a 90-10 sorta grant.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second, any further discussion? Mr. Dieters.
Mr. Kellums.
Aye.
Ms. Schwagman.
Aye.
Mr. Weedman.
Aye.
One announcement I'd like to make is our first monthly brush chipping day will be held on April 6th behind the Township Administration Building. This is from 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM. I have one resolution tonight for the board to consider.
Stevie, we have document shredding coming up also.
Document destruction is on April 20th. Yep, sandwiched in between the two trash bashes.
Two trash bashes.
Yep. Which, first trash bash, which I mentioned earlier, at McDaniel Park, is the 12th and 13th. The South Trash Bash at Bechtel Park is on April 26th and April 27th. More information about these events can be found on our township website.
Okay.
Yep, one resolution for the board to consider. This is a resolution approving a contract for the 2024 Recalomite Road Repair Project and dispensing with the second reading. This will be, uh, project consists of applying Recalomite Asphalt Rejuvenator to various roads within the township. Hermanage Lane, Ivy Brook Court, Charter Oak Drive, Whitechapel Drive, Heighton Court, Donegal Drive, Guam Drive, Jeffrey Drive, Lang, Langhorne Drive, Gualata, Bestin Marie, and Donna Lane.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion is second, any further discussion? Mr. Dieters.
Mr. Kellums.
Aye.
Ms. Schwagman.
Aye.
Mr. Weedman.
Aye.
That is all I have. Thank you.
Okay, any questions? Okay, next item on the agenda is Law Director Report.
I have nothing to report.
Any questions for our law director?
I can answer them.
Administrator, Administrator Report, Mr. Beckford.
Mr. Taglant, the town tar, we are also evaluating that system for various township cameras the sheriff can have access to. So we'll look at that too as well from us. We're also looking at, we have a lot of software programs here at the township, so we're starting to break those down and figure out what we actually still use and don't use. We bought a lot of software the last couple of years, we're gonna figure out what's still good, so that's an ongoing process. And I have a whole slew of purchase orders for your consideration tonight. First one is for a blanket vendor, $5,000 for fire building costs. Another one for a blanket vendor, $5,400 for rental refunds. This is when someone successfully rents a facility and gets their deposit back. We have Advantage Tent and Party Rental, $6,390.13 for festival tents, tables, and chairs. We have a blanket vendor, vendor for $10,000 for general festival expenses. We have River City Entertainment LLC, $5,000 for festival entertainment DVD8. Rumkey Container Service, $5,521.70 for portlets and trash services for the festival. Cumulus Cincinnati, $7,000 for festival radio advertising, which is the same amount as last year. We have a blanket vendor for $10,700 for fire equipment grant. Chief, I believe, is this for the radios?
No, this was the one I reported last meeting about the ventilation stalls and stuff.
We have Trade Dog Touring, $5,000 for festival entertainment for the Red Hot Chili Pepper Tribute Band. And the final one is for Bronson O'Rourke, $5,000 for festival entertainment for the Bronson O'Rourke Band.
Motion to approve the stated PS.
Second.
Motion is second, any further discussion? Mr. Dieters.
Mr. Kellums.
Aye.
Ms. Schwagman.
Aye.
Mr. Weedman.
Aye.
Okay, next item on the agenda is Fiscal Officer Report.
Yes, the township had cash receipts of $408,388.52, dispersments of $320,655.72. A complete listing of the cash receipts and dispersments is available in the packet.
Do you have a motion to approve? So moved.
Second.
Motion is second, any further discussion? Mr. Dieters.
Mr. Kellums.
Aye.
Ms. Schwagman.
Aye.
Mr. Weedman.
Aye.
Okay, next item on the agenda is Trustee Comments. Who would like to go first?
I'll go. First of all, the spring has sprung. My allergies are reminding me daily that spring has sprung. But that means a couple of things. I want to thank our Parks and Rec team, they're out there, they've been out there in our parks getting them ready for all the, all the kids and players. Ballfields are getting ready to, to take, see a lot of action, so thanks to our team for getting those in tip-top shape. Also, would like to remind folks, with spring means kids are out playing, so please drive safely and look around your neighborhoods as you're driving around. We've got a lot of, a lot of little ones out running around for the first time in quite a while, so please drive safely. And finally, I have my favorite part of voting day on today, my sticker. Today was Election Day, for, for those of you out there that, hopefully, hopefully all of you took the opportunity to exercise your right and you went out to vote today. You'll get another opportunity come November, but, um, thanks to everyone out in the township that exercises their right to vote. Apparently, I've been told, it's now 7:35, so the polls have just closed, so you are out of opportunities until November. But thanks for all of those that, that do engage in that process every year. That's all I've got.
Okay. Tracy? I was going to talk about the election also, so the only other thing that I would say is to reiterate what Mr. Rudolph Schofer talked about, for everybody to take advantage of our trash bashes, very important, and brush chipping and document shredding, all very, uh, popular services that we offer. So please take advantage of those. Well said. I have nothing to add. Announcements, Community Development Block Grant Public Hearing Tuesday, April 2nd at 6:30 PM, and Tuesday, April 16th at 6:30 PM in the Township Administration Building. For all other events, you can check our website. And I'd like to make a, like to have a motion to adjourn into executive session as permitted by Ohio Revised Code, Section 121.22G1, to consider the employment of a public employee and the employment and compensation of a public employee. And also to adjourn into, to executive session as permitted by Ohio Revised Code, Section 121.22G4, to review negotiations on bargaining sessions with public employees concerning their compensation or other terms and conditions of their employment. So moved.
Second.
Motion is second, any further discussion? Mr. Dieters.
Mr. Kellums.
Aye.
Ms. Schwagman.
Aye.
Mr. Weedman.
And we will need Greg, Larry, and Mr. Rudolph, Stevie, three trustees, John.
Okay, we are back from executive session at 7:54, or is there any? Mr. Diet.
Mr. Kellums.
Here.
Ms. Schwagman.
Here.
Mr. Weedman.
Any further business?
Yes, board, I have two resolutions for your consideration. I shall read the first one, a resolution authorizing contract with the International Association of Firefighters, Unit Local 3907, and dispensing with the second reading.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion is second, any further discussion? Mr. Dieters.
Mr. Kellums.
Aye.
Ms. Schwagman.
Aye.
Mr. Weedman.
I'm gonna send the whole packet down, you may want to just, there's a lot signed on there for everybody, so everybody's eligible. I do have one more resolution, if you'd like me to read it now or wait till you finish signing your call.
Go ahead, go ahead.
I have a resolution setting a rate of pay for a part-time township employee.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion is second, any further discussion? Mr. Dieters.
Mr. Kellums.
Aye.
Ms. Schwagman.
Aye.
Mr. Weedman.
Aye.
That's it?
There's no other business, we'll take a motion to adjourn. So moved.
Second.
Motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.
7:55 PM.
7:55.